Good morning. We're here at the Marion County Fair, at the fairgrounds for our weekly board session, which is traditionally on Wednesday. It's Thursday today, July 12th, 2018, at 10 o'clock. And we're going to open our board session with the flag salute, so please join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dylan, you look like you've done that before as a Boy Scout, you know? Great job, thank you. We have, first thing on our agenda is public comment, and we have one person signed up for comment, Jack Loughlin. Jack, welcome.
This is working, right? Excellent. Yeah, I will try to be brief, as I know it's warm. Thank you. So my name is Jack Loughlin. I live about one mile west of Donald, and I wanted to talk briefly this morning about exclusive farm use land with regard to hot air balloon operations. I'm gonna give you a quick overview of hot air balloons and then about the land use issue. So, hot air balloons are aircraft that are regulated by the FAA. Their design standards, their certification, their manufacturer is all regulated by the FAA, just like airplanes and helicopters. They are inspected by the FAA, or someone designated by the FAA on an annual basis, a typical airplane mechanic would do. And they have to be flown by a certificated pilot. That pilot has to have training standards and pass check rides and written tests and so on. So they are aircraft. They're unique in that they can only control where they go based on what altitude they fly. So they can control their altitude very well, and what we do is we fly at different altitudes to find different winds to take us different directions. So, it's always an adventure. We never really know where we're going to land, so what we try to do is pick a launch location that, given the wind forecast, will allow us to fly over an area that is both safe and provides multiple landing opportunities in good locations. As an example, you wouldn't go take off a balloon from the coast, flying west, because the next landing opportunity is Hawaii, right? It would be very difficult to do. In Marion County, there's about 600 to 800 balloon flights a year that fly over Marion County, and that has been occurring for the past 28 years, at least. It hasn't always been 600 to 800, but it's a... Marion County has the most balloon flights in the state due to a couple of operators that operate commercially over Marion County. I would estimate that over 95% of these operations are over EFU land, just because it's much easier to find a nice place to land if you're over farmland. If permission from the landowner is not granted in order to land or take off your balloon, then obviously it's a trespass issue. So balloon pilots are basically required to get landowner permission in order to take off or land their balloon. The process takes about 15 minutes to either set up your balloon or take it down. It doesn't alter the land in any way. It's very similar to putting a blanket on your grass and then picking it back up. That's essentially what the balloon is, is just fabric. I was recently told that the Marion County land use and zoning laws that pertain to EFU land do not allow balloons as a permitted or a conditional use. So essentially, anyone that ever lands a balloon in EFU-zoned land in Marion County is violating the law, which was concerning to me. This has been occurring for a long time, and I don't think any balloon operators are aware of it. I certainly wasn't aware of it as a pilot. I've been flying for 19 years, have been involved in aviation full-time for the last 12 years. I'm a test pilot for both airplanes and helicopters, and I balloon on the weekends for the fun of it primarily. So it was shocking to me and concerning. I think it would be to other balloon pilots as well. We want to operate legally. We want to make sure that we're within, you know, operating within all of the laws that are applicable. So, I've drafted a proposed change that could be made to Marion County code to allow balloon operations on EFU land, again, with permission from the landowner. That's a trespass issue. And I'd be happy to answer questions now. I've got copies of sort of bullet points of what I talked about, and I'll leave that with someone from your staff, and also hang around after the meeting in case anyone has additional questions for me.
Great, Jack. Thanks for bringing it to our attention. I had not heard of this issue before. Did you, Commissioner?
Yeah.
I guess I was talking to this, but we'll have a process, and if you can leave this behind, if you haven't already, we'll get it to planning, and then I think we're supposed to stay out of it till later stages. So, if you have a request, we'll guide you to how to get it through the system eventually to where we can make a discussion and decision on it. Otherwise, we should probably leave it alone right now.
Yeah, I totally understand. I got here by way of talking with the planning commission and other folks in the county. I wanted to bring it to your attention because I feel like it will eventually come to you at some point.
Great, Jack. And council just said it has been sent to legal, so it's already in the process someplace.
Okay.
All right?
Great.
Yeah. Thank you for being here. Enjoy the fair, too.
Thank you.
Yeah. Wow, I gotta take off my coat. I'm sweating.
I said we could deal with the sun fine, and it's still early. It's a gorgeous day, but it is a little warmer than I made for. So, I can't just fill in for you all morning.
And I did find my agenda. I was sitting on it, so it wouldn't blow away. So, we have a presentation about the 2018 Marion County Fair with Tamara and Dylan, and I don't know if Jill's gonna be able to be here or not, but we got... Oh, goody, goody, goody. Welcome.
So, thank you, Commissioners, for the record. I'm Tamara Getch, the Director for Community Services, and I get to play for the next four days out here at the fair. I'm joined this morning by Dylan Wells, who is our Chair of our Fair Board, and this is a sampling of what we're gonna see at the fair. If you come into the barns and see some of these kids and their projects, if one of you would be willing to hang out and just tell us what you do at the fair... Come on, all right, come on in.
Dylan, wait.
They're all holding.
He's not even a year old yet. It's okay.
Go ahead and give us the name, and go on to the name.
This is Siva. She's a baby. She isn't even a year old yet, and she's complaining because her mother is... She's walked away. We come here every year to show the llamas and alpacas to the public and educate them, and honestly, it's great. It's a great experience for the babies, too, because it gets them more comfortable with social situations. She's... This is her first fair ever, and she's a little stressed out, but it's okay. That's why we're here. We do shows in the barn. We have showmanship, obstacle... Our obstacle course is amazing. Everybody needs to come and see it. I love it. It's every single year we go through pools, over bridges. It's really funny, especially to watch the babies try and go through it. Do you guys have any questions?
So, yeah, where's her mom, you said? Is that her mom right down the...
Siva's right here next to her.
Okay.
Her mom is next to her.
Yeah. And then, are they sheared once a year, or can you talk about their coats and what happens?
Yeah, we normally shear them once a year when they're young, unless their fiber's growing a bit slower. As they get older, their fiber starts to grow slower, and it takes longer to grow. So we try and shear them in the summertime to make sure they're not getting too hot, but we also have to make sure it grows long enough so that we can actually do something with it.
Yeah, as I say, is there's a good market for their shearers?
Sometimes. It really depends on where you look for it. A lot of people love spinning with it, or felting, or there's like crocheting and stuff like that. It's really great.
Great. I was watching how it was kind of rambunctious, and it reminded me of somebody that I get to work with every day.
Still looking for my mother, too.
Dylan, are you gonna say something?
Yeah, we're just gonna have you guys walk back through, and as you come by, go ahead and introduce us and your lawnmower alpaca's name, too, as well.
My name is Nikki, and my alpaca's name is Yakama.
I'm Sarah, and this is Siva.
Hi, I'm Shinoa, and this is my alpaca, Orion.
Hi, I'm Lily, and this is Arti.
I'm Deanna, and this is Pip.
I'm Ryan, and this is Jamaica.
I wanted to say hello, too.
My name is Benson, and this is Flash.
I'm Lily, and this is Coco.
My name's William, and this is Julius.
Thank you, guys. Enjoy the fair. Thank you very much. Well, back to...
Dylan today, Kevin.
Right. No, but back to your presentation, because that's probably the most fun part, other than the ice cream and the pig barn, right?
It's all good.
So, today we are... is Honor Day. We're going to have a presentation tonight here on the main stage. We have a lot... We have real heroes going on over here. We have the carnival going. We have all the animals that have started loading in on Tuesday, so they're all at home back there. Things are humming at all hours back there. We have all of our food vendors getting fired up. I'm already craving an elephant ear. Things are going... The Dairy Wives are back there slinging ice cream. They got going a little bit yesterday when it was warm. All the kids were coming up. Tomorrow, we have Steve Ajari coming up. He is a singer that was with Journey for a while. He'll be out at, I believe, 8:30 tomorrow night. We have Easton Corbin coming out Saturday, and also we have the rodeo going on Saturday. New to this year, we have The Woods, which is brought to us by Crown Royal back here in the Natural Resources area, so there will be a full bar added with our beer sales. We have many sponsors going on. There's corporate parties happening along with the fair, so they can come out and enjoy the fair. Tamara, you wanna add anything?
I just want to recognize the fair board. Dylan is one of seven board members. We are also joined by key volunteers that help to put this fair event on each year. It is a year-long project that we luckily get to have fun in the sun. There's going to be food that is happening all day, as well as exhibit halls. I think sometimes when you're... When the weather's nice, folks forget about the exhibit halls, but that's where all the public competitions come from. And they bring in their flowers, they bring in their baked goods, they bring in their vegetables, their table settings, et cetera. That's all in there, as well as our vendor exhibitors. There's something for every generation here at the fair, and Marion County, we really try to have a diverse representation, not only of our community, but of what our community members enjoy. So, we just wanted to invite you all to participate, recognize our fair board for all of their hard work, and welcome you to our opening day.
Well, thank you very much. And Dylan, thank you for your leadership on the fair board. Appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, one of the things we haven't recognized or acknowledged yet is this is the 175th anniversary of Marion County. We talked a little bit about that this morning, and Commissioner Brentano has a lapel pin that recognizes that from Marion County, as well as I've got one from Shempui, where the actual county was formed 175 years ago. And I love to say it went all the way into Canada, all the way to the Rocky Mountains, and I think you said like a quarter of the west coast or something like that. And we were very generous in Marion County, so we gave it away, gave a lot of it away, kept the best farm ground, obviously. We're the number-one farm gate county in the state of Oregon. And the other thing I mentioned this morning is that Marion County purchased this fairgrounds many, many years ago, and we were generous and gave it to the state for, what, a dollar or something? One dollar, many, many years ago. Not sure you and I were here to make that decision, but...
I would've made it.
Yeah, we would've got some... We would've got, you know, free rent for life. But we do work very well with the state fair board and do trade out... Public Works does a lot of their paving and things to help us keep the expense down. So, thank you, Tamara and Dylan, for all you do and the volunteers that are here today. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get into some business, maybe, or do you want to make any comments?
No, no, you covered it pretty well. I really enjoyed just kind of kicking back this morning and looking. Everything's bright and clean, the air's beautiful, or the sky, I should say. It's a little warmer than perhaps I like, but I'm so happy to be here, and you mentioned the board and all the volunteers that make this work. I really appreciate what they're doing.
So, great.
With that, I'll start on a consent calendar, if you don't mind. Chair Cameron, I'd make a motion that we approve that consent calendar this morning. On it, under Business Services, we approve a recommendation to adjust pay grades upward and update specifications for classification number 322, a cartographer GIS technician, and 323, cartographer GIS technician senior. Health, approve amendment number one, intergovernmental agreement with the city of Woodburn for continuation of the Mobile Crisis Team through June 30th, 2019, and additional funding of $64,100 to cover sworn law enforcement officer as part of the Mobile Crisis Team. Public Works receive a hearings officer's decision approving condition to use case number 18029... I don't know. Magana. Clerks file 5748. Sheriff's Office, approve amendment number two to the contract for services with maximum staffing solution to add $5,000 for nursing staff located at the jail. Approve amendment four to the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Corrections for the Women's Reentry Program to provide $400,290 and extend it through January 31st, 2020. Approve amendment seven to the contract for service with Avian Stad, $1,310,000 for the jail food service and extend through June 30th, 2019. And the last is approve incoming funds in intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon State Marine Board to provide law enforcement services to the lakes and waterways located in Marion County for $147,671 and extend through June 30th, 2019.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? I just want to say that I saw the jail food service, and those biscuits they do, or rolls they do, are pretty darn good. We get to go once a year and try them out. All right. No further discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, onto our action items. Business Services, Larry, I saw you over there sweating. Come on in. We're gonna consider approval of a contract for services with Reese Complete Security Solutions for $300,000 to perform maintenance and repairs of existing control systems and software for various Marion County locations. Welcome, Larry.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. Larry Tilford, Facilities Program Manager for Marion County, and I'm proposing a three-year contract with Reese. We have a partnership with Reese that goes back to February of 2015. We have a really good partnership with that firm, and they are the local representation for the Linell card reader system that the county uses extensively. And with all of the new leasing spaces that we're developing and some of the new construction, those card readers are ever more important and increasing in number. So this contract is for services and new installations, and it also gives us an option to install alarm systems if we desire to do that.
Great. Any questions?
And if there are no questions, and I... And you didn't either, I take it. So, I'd make a motion, we do approve the contract for services with Reese Complete Security for $300,000 for maintenance and repairs of existing control systems.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thanks, Larry. Go find some shade. Take John with you. I think he's dying over there. Mr. Latimer, well...
Can't we find him a hat?
All the hats that were around here today, we could probably find him one. He's a baseball guy, likes to wear baseball hats. Next item under action is under Health Department, consider approval of a contract for services with Pivot Point Consulting LLC to provide assessment for electronic health record solution for $177,015 through November 2018. And I see Carrie is here with us this morning.
Good morning. I also have Ryan Matthews, our Division Director for Administrative Services. So before you, this morning is for consideration for a contract with Pivot Point Consulting. This is a really important issue for the Health Department, and it's primary to our top initiative in our strategic plan. It's really two phases. What you have before you today is a request to approve this contract, which will provide us an assessment of our ongoing health record needs. It's a very complicated process, and with the current technology, we want to make sure that we've got a really good evaluation of what our needs are going forward. So that's what we're asking Pivot to help us with, is to provide an assessment to build on a phase two of issuing RFP for our electronic health record vendor.
Ryan, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I mean, I'll just echo the importance of this, of a new electronic health record for our department. I think it's critical to provide better customer services to the individuals that seek our services. It helps us to collaborate with our partners, and I think it really enables us to make process improvements within the department for our staff and our leadership. So I think it's pretty critical, and our hope is that Pivot Point, being an expert and having been through this implementation many times, can help kind of guide us through the process and make sure that we make the right decision.
So efficiencies as well as security with HIPAA, that's really important, right? Any comments? Any questions?
No, we've talked about that, but they'll help write the RFP, perhaps, or really direct you to where you... What you're looking for? Is that the whole scheme here?
Yes, that's correct.
All right.
The other thing I'd add is coordinated care is central to our healthcare system, and with a high functioning health record, we'll be in a better position to do better coordinated care as well.
Okay.
Ready? Okay. Chair Cameron, I'd make a motion, we do approve the contract for services with Pivot Point Consulting to provide an assessment of electronic health records for $177,015 through November 15th, 2018. Looks like they'll be getting right after it.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Go find some shade. Drink some water.
Carrie was hoping to hear "God bless America" this morning, Kevin, by the way. I know it.
It's warm water.
He doesn't even hear me.
I heard. "God bless America."
You could've done it. You had the opportunity.
I think we did that last year, right?
Hey, Mr. Chair, I think I may need help here with sunburn.
Well, we just don't want you to pass out. Keep drinking that warm water.
Do a pivot assessment and get you some... Are you gonna holler or just fall over? How will I know? Okay.
Okay. Next on our action agenda is, under Public Works, consider approval of partnership agreement with Jefferson School District for road improvements on Talbot Road. Alan Haley is here with us. Good morning, Alan.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Alan Haley, Public Works Director. Before you is, as you said, a partnership agreement with Jefferson School District. The school district is building a new middle school on the same site as their high school, and it's part of a conditional use action that was approved. The bond measure that they did was approved well over a year ago, and it was... The funding for that was basically for the school without having known exactly all the permits and stuff that would be necessary once the school was being built. The department had requested that they do a traffic impact analysis, and that came back. We've done some amendments and worked with the consultant, but the department is of the belief that we do need a left-hand turn refuge into the school, that actually the high school as it stands right now actually qualifies for that left-hand refuge. This was not part of the funding that Jefferson School District had planned for. So, while the school district needs it, it's my belief that the other 1,200 to 1,500 people who are traveling on Talbot Road, as a safety factor, that they need to have this refuge put in as well. So we've put into an agreement where the Public Works Department will contribute $250,000 as a minimum, or 50% of whatever the final cost of this improvement will be. And the school district has indicated that they're in agreement with this. So, that's the agreement that's in front of you, is to go ahead and approve this partnership agreement for the improvements on Talbot Road.
Just a clarification, Alan, and just it says a maximum amount of 250. I know we discussed this. Is it in the contract?
Apparently you have a different version, the previous...
This is on the board session agenda summary, so...
Yes, actually, the 2.4 of the agreement now reads that we will contribute... County will contribute SDC funds in the amount of $250,000, or 50% of the design and construction costs, whichever is greater.
Great. I just want to clarify, it is there in the contract... It is there in the partnership agreement, it just wasn't on the summary, so thank you.
Yes.
Good.
If I could, I really feel like we've tried to make it work for them, I should say you in particular, and Public Works, Alan, but it makes me think that... Well, the consultants they're using should have a pretty good idea of all the kind of things that are needed on a project, whether it's a public project like a school, or rebuilding, or something with a house. And it ought not be left for the county to make up the shortage. So how do we get... How do we get the information, the permit requirements, to make sure they really looked at what the full price is before they, perhaps like in this case, go out for a bond and then not have enough? Those are kind of horrible situations. So what... Can we do any more, Alan?
Other school districts do, in fact, take care of this, and Jefferson did try. Their consultant recommended that they would not need any improvements on Talbot Road. This was over a year ago. But the TIA had not been done, the traffic impact analysis. And once the TIA was completed and reviewed with our department, the results of that consultant came back and said that the Jefferson School District and the county need to work out what's required on Talbot Road. And so it was well past the bond measure time, and I think from a safety perspective for the students that are now mixing high school students with a lot of other traffic from the middle school and the other residents that are on Talbot Road going back and forth from I-5 and Jefferson, I just felt that it was something that was really required, and our traffic team just knew that they needed to put a refuge in.
Alan's probably shaking his head as I ask him these things, because we've put on, and I... And they... And Public Works has done kind of an attitude to try to make it work for people. I think this is a prime example of that, that technically they needed to go further, but we're gonna make it work, and I'm really... I'm pleased about that. So unless you have other comments, perhaps you do?
Just a question. I know we were trying to get in touch with the Safe Routes to Schools people, because that's what this is about, right? Students and safety. We've been able to make that connection, Alan, and is there any potential to help with that as well? Help from that? The transportation package?
Well, technically, yes, Safe Routes to Schools, but it's not actually a part of the Safe Routes to Schools. I've been playing phone tag with the contact you made, but Safe Routes to Schools is more along the sidewalks, pedestrian paths, bicycle paths versus the road improvements that we're talking about. But we haven't decided yet for sure that they don't qualify. We were supposed to talk today. I left her a message again yesterday, so we've just been playing phone tag, but we will investigate... We will investigate all those options.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ready.
All right, Chair Cameron, if I could, I'd make a motion that we do approve a partnership agreement with Jefferson School District for road improvements on Talbot Road.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks, Alan.
Thank you, Commissioners, and happy day at the fair.
Thanks for supporting the school district down there in the community. Okay, under Sheriff's Office, consider approval of incoming funds contract for services with ICS Solutions Inmate Communications to provide communication services and equipment to the jail for inmate use through June 30th, 2022. And Tad Larson is here with us today. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. For the record, my name's Tad Larson. I'm the jail commander for the sheriff's office. But we're pleased to report that it was time to go out for a request for proposal on phone services, and we're here to report that ICS Solutions is going to be awarded the contract. Some key things to note, as far as changes go with technology, first and foremost, we're gonna save the inmates and their families at least five cents a minute on the phone call. cents a minute on the phone calls, so we think, think that that was really good news. And ICS Solutions brings some other technology, um, that we hadn't implemented before, such as, uh, the use of tablets for education and filling out of forms electronically that we can add to that device. And there's also a voicemail option that we're kind of excited about when the inmate's day room time doesn't line up with their family's home or work schedule, so they'll be able to check and leave voicemails and things like that with their family. So, a couple of cool features that we hadn't been able to use before, and we're excited about the prospects and what that'll bring for our, our clients, as well as the community.
That's fantastic. I know we, we worked really hard on reentry issues and, and, uh, having connections with family and, uh, healthy friendships is really important as people come out and, and reenter, so this will help with the voicemail and the communications and, and obviously saving some money. That's, that's a positive thing. Commissioner, any comments?
No, I just, almost questions. In the past, the phone is, uh, at the jail's been a problem, there's been different issues. Everything's going well. This'll complement what's been working. Any, any comments on that?
Yeah, we've worked really hard with the current provider, and, uh, there was a, a change in service technicians a while ago, and they were much, they became much more responsive, and, and we reminded them of the letter of the contract. So, we've received a little better service when we've had technical difficulties, but we're looking forward to the, the enhancements and the changes here, not only complement what we're doing, but it's gonna take some of those communications to the next step.
Great.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I am.
All right, then I would, uh, Chair Cameron asked to make a motion to approve incoming funds contract for services with ICS Solutions，在 inmate communications to provide communication service equipment to the jail through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commander, thank you for your service. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a great day. And if we can hold these outside more often, I wouldn't be opposed.
Do you, uh, get to wear shorts? I know, I've seen Dave Zahn up at the, Deputy Zahn up at the lake in shorts.
There's some infrequent allowances, but I don't think you wanna see me in shorts, sir.
All right. Well, I'm gonna put 'em on soon. Okay, that completes our action. I wish I could delegate this to you and just go into the shade this morning. Maybe next year, right? I'll delegate it. So, I'll go ahead and read our calendar. Mr. Latimer, I'm gonna delegate this to you. Can you sit down and read the, the calendar and stay?
Absolutely not.
Yeah, right. Okay, so where we're gonna be, uh, we've already, uh, we've already done the photo judging contest today, so that was on last week's con- calendar. We're in our board session. Thank goodness it says it ends at one, and we're gonna end it at about ten forty-five or before. Uh, Monday, uh, on the sixteenth of July at eight-thirty, we'll have calendar review in the Silverton Concert, Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor at five-five-five Court Street Northeast. Monday at nine AM, uh, the sixteenth as well, management update, same location as calendar review. Uh, on Tuesday, the seventeenth, nine-thirty AM, we're gonna have a work session on communication systems located in the Silverton Con- Conference Room on the fifth floor at, uh, five-five-five Court Street Northeast. Tuesday at eleven-thirty AM, Marion County Reentry Initiative Planning Meeting, same location at the Silverton Conference Room on Tuesday, the seventeenth. Ooh, at six PM, on Tuesday, this, Tuesday, the seventeenth at six PM, Scotts Mills Pizza in the Park, location at City Mills, City Park. I, I, that's posted on our schedule, because I think two of us are planning on going there and having pizza and, and saying hi to the folks out there. And I think we're gonna look at the bridge and make sure that the bridge is in great shape and doesn't need to have any further work done to it. Um, I, on Wednesday, the eighteenth of July, we will be back at our normal, um, um, board session at nine o'clock in the Senate Hearing Room on the first floor at five-five-five Court Street Northeast. And then also on Wednesday, um, it says five-thirty AM, but I believe it's five-thirty PM, uh, Catholic Community Services Bishop Circle Reception at Ilahi Hills Country Club, thirty-three seventy-six, Country Club Drive South in Salem. I think we're done.
No, we're not. No, now, you can't, you can't say that about Scotts Mills Bridge. That thing has to go. I'm gonna panic people here, but that, they rate bridges on a scale of zero to a hundred, and I don't even wanna say publicly what that number is. Now, it's not unsafe, but it has to be replaced. So, it'd be a good chance to go look under that again and move that project along.
I'll drive over it while we're out there.
I'm not going, I mean...
I will. I'll walk over it, too. Think it'll hold my weight when I walk over it?
I don't know. I don't know, but maybe not after the pizza.
It's an old metal bridge, yeah.
And you said something else that had my attention. What was that? No... Oh, you, you didn't talk about the things, or maybe, are you done here today? Or I have a, is that right? You're just leaving now? I'm not getting...
No, no, I, no, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hang around.
I wanna comment on him.
I, hey, well, we're sitting in the sun, too, John, so, you know, it's leadership by example here, right?
See, only the staff stayed for this, and that means a lot to me. I wanted, uh, we need to comment on that. We appreciate everything you do.
No.
We don't appreciate it?
Jack Laughlin's here.
One guy.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah. You wanna join staff?
Tiger tails are always appreciated. Yeah, we have a spot for you, apparently a lot of them. Now, but there's, there's a walk-around gonna happen today. Um, what am I, oh, a pioneer, I'm not quite sure, Jolene, we should make you...
Pioneer celebration.
Do you wanna talk about that a little bit, what that is? No? She just wants this meeting to end.
I think it's at four-thirty, right?
And then a veterans' presentation, and then, uh, representatives from the communities around Marion County for dinner this evening. It's a big day. Um, pretty excited about it, to be honest.
Yeah, and, and I'm gonna be here for a while. I just, I just, I have to, I've got this medical procedure I have to leave for.
I wasn't trying to get in it, but the hat looks so good here. I mean, you really fit. This, you can't just leave.
Well, I will at some point in time. I think I gotta, I gotta leave by like two, or, or a little bit after that, but...
All right.